Order, it's May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Notice has been duly posted. Rocco?
Mayor Joe Chilson?
Here.
Tom Smith?
Here.
Dan Stevens?
Here.
Boon Dyer here?
Here.
Jim Olson?
Here.
Kim Smith?
Here.
Diane Wolfe?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
City Council Committee and Subcommittee meeting shall be conducted in a courteous manner. Citizens, council, and committee members shall be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander, insults, obscene remarks, threats of violence, or for use of the common council or any committee meeting as a platform for political positions. Sufficient warning may be given by the Sergeant-at-Arms at any time during the remarks, and in the event that any individual shall violate the rules of decorum here to fore set forth, such person may be cut off from further comment or debate. Okay, public comment. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. That's not you guys.
My name is Park Hunter. I'm the pastor on Alaska United Methodist Church, two twelve Fourth Avenue North here in Onalaska, and on behalf of the Christian churches here in the state, I've come to bring a word of greeting and thank you and to offer a blessing. I've been getting ready in a few weeks. I fly to England and a college friend and I will celebrate our fiftieth birthdays by hiking eighty miles. I'm not dead yet, but I might be in a few weeks. So I've been warming up by doing a lot of longer walking, and a couple of weeks ago I walked from the church here on a Thursday evening down to my house, which is by Central High School, and then the next day I walked back because I had to get my car. And that really, you know, walking like that gives you a chance to really see the community, and both here in Onalaska and in La Crosse. I was just really impressed with how people care for their properties. Walked past, especially in North La Crosse, a lot of people still pumping water out of their basements and was thinking about them, and going through the Great River Landing down there, just amazed to see all the people that go down there and take advantage of that. And especially when I was coming back north, I appreciated the hospitality of the open restrooms. So we're very grateful for the good facilities that we have that our city provides, and we're also grateful for our community organizations. I'm part of a Rotary Club that's been raising money for the sculpture, and we do road cleanup and things like that. Our church just tonight had their free community dinner and fed a hundred people. We're not by any means unique among that. We're just really blessed in this area with businesses and community organizations, churches, government that cares. There is a passage in the Book of Hebrews that says, "Don't neglect to show hospitality to strangers, because by doing so sometimes you entertain angels unawares." And when we maintain a clean and safe community and when we really work together to make that happen, we're offering hospitality to all sorts of folks. So I'm going to offer a quick prayer. If you'd like to pray with me, if that's your tradition, you're welcome. If not, then enjoy a moment of silence. Lord, we're so grateful for the gifts that you have showered upon Onalaska, and for leaders who care, for civic servants who step forward and serve often above and beyond the call of duty, for citizens who look out for each other and take care of their community, and look out for guests and strangers and welcome them. We have a reputation as being a community that cares and a good place to live, a good place to go to school, a good place to work. And in this sense, we're just reflecting your love for the world. Lord, we ask that you would guide us, that we would be wise in the use of the resources entrusted to us, and that we would be good stewards and continue to show good hospitality. Amen. Thank you very much, and I have to go back and wash dishes now, so have a good night.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public input?
Kinda.
Good evening. Troy Miller, Assistant Chief with the Onalaska Police Department, currently Acting Chief. I'm here to apologize to my department. Lot going on in our department in the city lately, and one thing I neglected to do is put on the agenda tonight for National Police Week. This is National Police Week, and I think it's very important that I recognize not only our department and our officers, but all the officers nationwide for the job that they do. So Police Week was established in nineteen sixty-one, and President John F. Kennedy signed it to become a law that designated May fifteenth of each year, Peace Officer Memorial Day. And that has grown to whichever week May fifteen falls into is a week-long designation for honoring those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and those who continue to serve our nation today. So as Assistant Chief and Acting Chief, I wanted to give a public note of appreciation to my department for the outstanding work they have done, the support they have given me, the support they give your community of Onalaska, the support they give and the protection that they offer us. Our department would not be successful without the men and women that work in our department. And I also want to go ahead and recognize every law enforcement officer, police sheriff, FBI, you name it, all those different letters that come to associate with law enforcement. A heartfelt thank you to everyone that does this job day in and day out. They definitely deserve the public recognition. And again, I apologize for not having an agenda item to formally recognize them, but hopefully this will get the point across and serve its purpose. So if you have a chance, I encourage everyone to reach out to law enforcement as you see them, and please offer them a thank you for the job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I think I speak for the entire council in saying, please pass on to your officers how much we appreciate the job they do for us, especially on this week of Police Memorial Day, which is tomorrow, correct? Anyone else wishing to give public input?
My name is Kim Smith. I live at four three six Mayfair Place in Onalaska, and I'm also the Third District Alder Person Representative. I just want to take a minute to remind everyone that the La Crosse County Sustainability Committee, which is a committee I serve on representing the city of Onalaska, together with the city of La Crosse, La Crosse County, and other representation from across the county, will be hosting Water Forum on Thursday in only two days. It's going to be Thursday from five thirty to six thirty in the basement auditorium of the La Crosse County Administrative Center. The topics that will be covered are nitrates in well water and its impact on health. This has been a topic that's appeared many times in the news lately, and it's affecting us locally. So Jennifer Rombowski from the La Crosse County Health Department will be there sharing facts, factual information, that will be followed by a forum where residents can ask questions, share their input ideas for things that we can do to improve the quality of our drinking water and reduce nitrates in our area. We're also going to be talking about the La Crosse River watershed. Kyle Green from the UW Madison Division Extension Office in La Crosse County will be representing information we've been working on gathering about the La Crosse River and ways that we can improve the water quality there. One of the goals that we've kind of taken on as a water task force is to see what things that we can do as residents, as cities, as a county, to help restore the water quality of rivers, streams, lakes, and ponds that make up the La Crosse River watershed. And we hope to do this by concentrating efforts to reduce non-point source phosphorus pollution. We are trying to advocate for streambank protection, restoration, and permanent easements with the goal of removing the La Crosse River from the impaired water classification list, and this is something that I personally am passionate about. And if any of you have any questions, please be sure to reach out to me. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public input? Second call, anyone wishing to give public input? Oh, yes, I have a letter to read.
Point of order. It was my understanding that this council had taken action, that letters that were submitted were only going to be acknowledged and said in the record, that they weren't going to be read out loud in their entirety.
I'm not aware of that. Is anybody else aware of that? Carrie, are you aware of that? Sean?
I think I'll take action.
This to, there was discussion regarding this a few months, discussion regarding this a few months ago, and I believe that that was the decision made at that time. It was in early two thousand seventeen, nineteen, sorry.
Let's just place it on file.
Okay, let's just place it on file, and let's make sure that we at least look that up to make sure that we're not giving, cutting somebody off of their ability to communicate with us.
Would it be possible to recognize the person's name and what the letter was about?
Sure. We received a letter from George Tabbert about the Arts Commission today, that actually that I'm going to be pulling off the agenda later, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Library statistics, did the council president get anything on library statistics? I did not either, so we will forego that. Peace. Proclamation for Kids to Parks Day. Whereas, May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, is the ninth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks, and whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. That's as good as I can get it. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage our large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And now therefore, we, the city of Onalaska, do hereby proclaim to participate in Kids to Parks Days. We urge residents of Onalaska to make time, May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park dated this fourteenth day of May, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second? Motion made by Alder T. Smith and seconded by Alder Olson to accept the proclamation for Kids to Parks Day. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? So moved. I am pulling the appointments of citizens from the standing committees at this time because the, I had asked for bios from the people, and I did not get bios that I thought were sufficient for the council. So I'm going to wait another month before I bring those forward. Item D, consideration of a request from the city of La Crosse. Yes?
We still need to do the appointments of the alderpersons, and I believe on Joint Municipal Court, Fred is a standing, or not, an alder?
Yes, we have the appointment of Fred and the appointment of Diane as the Board of Zoning Appeals Chair, and Jim Olson on the Arts Commission.
And then I, Library Commission is Diane Wolfe Chair also. And then Brent Larson was a current member, not a new member, so that would be somebody I would not think we would need a bio from.
Correct. We won't need one from Brent because he's been on there before.
I don't know if you want to go ahead with that.
Okay, that's fine. So is there a motion to approve Brent Larson on the, may I see your chair? Yeah, one. So the slate would then be on the Arts Commission, Alder, Jim Olson, Board of Zoning Appeals, Diane Wolfe as Chair, and Brent Larson. Joint Municipal Court, Fred Bueller is alternate for our Onalaska appointee, Diane Wolfe as Alder Person and Chair of the Library Commission.
I move to approve with the addition of the mayor on the Arts Commission.
Second.
Oh, you won't let me wiggle out of that. Okay. All in favor of the slate? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? So moved. And I will bring those more substantial bios next time. Okay, now, consideration of a request from City of La Crosse Mayor Tim Cabot for funding for the La Crosse Center expansion. Mayor, welcome.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you, and with me tonight are representatives from the La Crosse Common Council as well as from La Crosse Center Board and staff. I promise to be very brief. I'm more interested honestly in your questions or comments or feedback about what we're doing with the La Crosse Center and what is the nature of our request rather than having to listen to me all night. So just real quick, three quick points. La Crosse Center is a regionally significant driver of our economy, and as a part of our efforts now, it's been going on several years to go through our planning processes, looking at our market as well as the economic impacts of what the La Crosse Center represents, we've learned that the current regional economic impact from the La Crosse Center operations is about thirty-eight million dollars every year. Our plans include a fairly significant increase in the amount of square footage for ballrooms and meeting spaces and kind of, you know, lobby and gathering spaces, and we're planning and hoping to see another approximate six million dollar impact on top of that. So if all things go according to plan, we'll have a facility that generates about forty-four million dollars every year for the larger region. And we feel that it's important that we have this facility, it's a much-needed facility. It's one of those facilities, I think, that has to do a lot of things well, everything from, you know, national touring acts to weddings and monster truck shows and everything in between. So it does definitely meet a significant need for our larger region, and most importantly, I think probably for you as you're contemplating this request, you know, how does a city like Onalaska or how does the larger region benefit? And I would say that, I'm not sure how long, for example, the city of Onalaska's had a room tax, but I would be willing to bet that there has been room tax dollars generated from events at the La Crosse Center that have helped Onalaska's budget. So we feel that it's very appropriate to be here tonight. We have a similar request with La Crosse County that we'll also be addressing, and like I said, we're very happy to answer questions, or if you've got some homework for us, we're happy to do that too. Art and Brent are happy to do the homework, maybe I'll say that. We do have a very robust financing plan as a part of this effort, so all along we've been looking at a combination of borrowing, cash reserves, as well as a fairly significant grant from the state of Wisconsin. We were able to obtain a four-point-five million dollar grant from the state based on our overall scope. Our scope of our project is forty-two million dollars. It's really a combination of renovations and expansions. The current kind of meeting space, and I'm just going to use rough numbers, and Art or Brent can correct me if I'm wildly wrong, maybe not, if I'm close, give me the benefit. But there's about a hundred thousand square feet currently of arena space, meeting space, ballroom space. We're looking at about a thirty to forty thousand dollar addition when you add up all those rooms. So it's a very significant expansion that includes really all parts of the facility because we're going to touch all the concession areas, the bathrooms, the offices, you know, everything from top to bottom. It needs it. Part of our financing plan does include debt service, so there's a borrowing of about thirty-five point five million dollars. Doing the rough numbers, the annual debt service is about two-point-five million dollars. We're looking at a combination of room tax funds for that, property tax levy, a ticket surcharge, as well as requests from your community and La Crosse County. And the reason why we're really, I guess, focused on both La Crosse County and Onalaska is that we've been modeling or we're looking at this from the approach the same as UW La Crosse Stadium project that happened now, I believe it was twelve years ago, if I've got my dates right, that folks from UW La Crosse were here asking for help from not only Onalaska and La Crosse County, but the city of La Crosse as well, because of the regional nature of what the UWL Stadium represents. So we're here in a very similar type of arrangement that we're looking at. I think it's really important that we do this, and we're, our council has approved the concept, so the designs, those things are moving forward. The architects and engineers are working very diligently now on all the details, so that's really the last hurdle, if you will, to move this forward. So we're full steam ahead. And I'll just close with this, and I'm anticipating maybe one of your questions. Is the funding from Onalaska absolutely needed? And my answer would be yes. However, this project is moving forward. I'm not going to try to pretend that somehow it's not. This project has to happen. It's a large driver regionally, and it is going to move forward. What I really feel like is important, and again, I think it was talked about when UW La Crosse came for funding for the stadium, is that this is an opportunity for us to move beyond talking the talk when it comes to regional collaboration and to actually put those words into action, and to show that we are in true spirit partners in these efforts. So with that, I'm not sure if you want, if you have questions or want to hear any more details on the nature of the project. Like I said, we've got representatives from the La Crosse Center Board here as well as our Common Council. But I would close and just again say thank you for even the consideration. We really appreciate it, and I'll be happy to answer questions, or not.
Okay, I think the way we should approach this is if we have any informational questions, because we're obviously not going to make a decision tonight, we're going to take this back and we're going to chew on the numbers a little bit and see what our appetite and what the city's appetite is for that A number. So if we could just maybe, if we have any, do you have any additional information for us?
We have, I mean, we can share, I guess, whatever you're most interested in. We have, you know, all the way from the beginning of our planning process, which includes the market study that we did, it includes two, you know, kind of original economic impact version, plus then an updated version based on our current design that's been approved. We have the information about our design that we can share from our architects. We have collected information, and maybe I'll just add this as well. We do have information that we've collected over the last five years because we're trying to just understand the breadth of who we serve with that facility, and we know out of the, and we do about a hundred to a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty events every year. We know that the folks that live outside of the city of La Crosse represent thirty-five to fifty-five percent of those hundred to a hundred and thirty events every year. So it is a, you know, it is a big regional driver as well as a benefit for folks that live in the area. So we can provide any and all of that. I'm not sure if, you know, if that's something, if Eric wants to put together kind of a list of questions or if the council, I mean, whatever your preference is, we're happy to try to address them.
I mean, I think this is the opportunity that the elected officials have, the public, to ask questions.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate, his point.
Yes, and thank you for attending tonight. I appreciate hearing from you firsthand, your passion for the project. I'm wondering, what is the funding gap that you're hoping to bridge through regional partnerships?
This, the request that we have for both La Crosse County and the city of Onalaska would be to reduce the property tax levy that we're asking for city of La Crosse taxpayers. So we're still working through a little bit on the negotiations on the room tax, but if all of that goes according to plan, we'll be looking at a property, an annual property tax levy to our residents and property taxpayers in La Crosse of about one-point-one million dollars. So if we are able to receive funding from, you know, either or both of our requests, that would go right into just reducing that property tax levy impact. It would go towards debt service, in essence.
I'd just like everybody to know that they also have the Executive Director of the Center here, Arts here, and the President of the Board, and we also have a representative from Ladco. So if any of your questions would be directed at them, they certainly would be able to answer those. Any other questions?
Eric Abbott, again, thank you for coming. And within the last week, I think council members had received a letter from, I believe it was the La Crosse Chamber of Commerce urging towards your cause, and it cited a regional effort at the Fox Cities Exhibition Center. And I did a little research on that, and that was recently built a few years back at a price of thirty-two million dollars. So if this is a forty-two million dollar remodel, have, it's kind of late to the game at this point, but have we considered just raising it and building from the bottom up? I mean, it strikes me that it would be approximately, after you raise and demolish it, about a nine million dollar savings.
The Center Board, to their credit, looked at all of those types of ideas at the very beginning of the process, and it is just too expensive to tear down the entire facility and build a brand-new facility. They did look at that, though, and I've, we've had some of that, you know, some of that input and feedback, especially when we were looking at a little bit different version last year. There were questions about all of that. Should we move it? Should we put it at other locations? The community has really spoken loud and clear through our, you know, several years of planning processes that they want that center to stay at its location, and in working with our design team, the architects, the Center Board, all of those stakeholders, it is, it is less expensive to renovate what we have there now because we still do have a fairly significant structure versus starting from scratch, but we did look at that.
Anyone else have any questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you. Part of my responsibility as administrator is to provide policy recommendations to the council, and in preparation for this meeting, most of the council members have engaged me with some questions, and I was hoping that they would engage the primary person that's here to present, but in the lack thereof, if I may, ask those questions on behalf. One point you made is getting beyond talking the talk and getting to the true spirit of regionalization, and I think the first... regionalization, and I think the first agreement that we make is, regionalization doesn't cause, also includes shared costs, and that's why we're here today to make that request. Two other parts of regionalization that I've heard frequently in the last several weeks, though, is, is there any sense of shared governance for this? I know there's, there was the public indicating that whenever it's time to pay for something, now we're engaged, but when it's time to make any plans or offer some insight, that's not the case. So would this plan, long-term, offer some sense of a seat at the table, if you will, for Onalaska?
I don't have an answer for you tonight, but it is definitely something that we would consider and discuss and provide more direction on. We've only heard that talk through the media at this point. I know the La Crosse Center Board has had a little bit of discussion about the possibility and opportunity to expand that group, so I guess the short answer is, we would definitely consider that, if that made sense.
The third part of regionalization is the sense of decision-making, not just governance, but the level of service. I think Alder Stevens, that question that you had posed earlier is similar to one that we had discussed as well, in terms of the decision of what to do with that, with the existing facility, to raise it or to expand it, to what level of expansion. I think there's definitely a sense of not being able to participate in that discussion, only at the very tail end, so that's important. So not just the shared cost, but the level of service provided with regionalization, in this case, what to do with the facility, and the governance of that are the three points that I've hear frequently.
I might just add, if that's okay. I mean, in an ideal world, this would be a county or a district facility that, you know, all of the folks within a much larger area would help govern and operate. It just so happens that here in the city of La Crosse, through a whole history, we have a number of these regional facilities, whether they're airports or La Crosse centers, that are, you know, solely within the city of La Crosse at this point, but that doesn't mean that they should stay that way. At least for our discussions tonight, it's the city of La Crosse coming to you, and not a larger county or regional district-wide entity.
To make a policy recommendation, I strongly agree, and I have made that recommendation in other regional discussions as well, in particular, the Metropolitan Sewage Districts as a shared service, something that takes off of the pressure of the city and passes those three topics I pointed out to everybody as well, and suggests, you know, fire or public safety is another aspect that we can continue to look at that. But I think those three aspects of there, that we all share the costs, we all share the benefits, and we all share the governance, is very important. So thank you for coming and presenting that. You identified looking for funding to help offset the taxpayer costs. Is there a particular kind of funding that you're requesting? General fund or anything else? As the policy discussion continues, based on where we are currently at, our 8%, this is more, less of a question, more of a point, so as we, for the council to decide, the, we are currently at, in the city of Onalaska, the 8%. We can't exceed the 8%, but only to fund a municipal, our own convention center. We could use our existing 8% in this other fashion, which would have to be reallocated from the current allocation site, so that would be a potential option. Of course, what we do already have is funding for the Omni Center, which would have to be backfilled somehow. The third option is the tax levy, using general fund expenses, which would also be part of, I think, the budget process, how to reallocate our finite resources as well. So those are really kind of the sources that you would have in your discussions to look at where this funding comes from.
And if I might just add, we understand that Onalaska is at the 8%, so we realize that you have perhaps a bit fewer options at the table than maybe some of the other communities do. Again, I would just point out, I think, in an ideal world, you'd have all of the folks that participate in the La Crosse County Convention and Visitors Bureau, all at the same room tax rate, and all kind of kicking into operations and the facilities. That's just, you know, we're getting there. We've made a lot of great progress in joining together as a county. We still have a ways to go. So we understand, back in 2007, Onalaska had some room tax capacity to be able to raise money for a period of time to help contribute to that stadium project, and unfortunately, that capacity is not there today, so we do, we do understand that.
I can speak again. Mayor, in a perfect world, what's the total amount of money that you are short that you don't directly control over the city of La Crosse?
In an ideal world, like, and you had mentioned the Fox Cities earlier, what, they were able to fund lease revenue bonds entirely with room taxes. They receive room taxes from Little Shoot, Appleton, I forget, maybe one or two other communities, that they utilize to pay the debt for that facility, and there might have been some tax increment financing in there as well. So that would be your ideal world, where you would have a non-tax levy situation, funding these types of operations, and I think we've got something to learn, perhaps, from the Fox Cities, where they were able to pool room tax dollars and fund that. So for us, as I said, it's not so much a matter of a gap, because we know that right now, we have about, you know, $1.1 million or so that's going to go onto our tax levy to fund this project, and we're looking to try to reduce that, if at all possible. We do not, just again, as an aside, we do not have an option to use tax increment financing for this project, because even though that center is in one of our newly-created TIFs, we have a development agreement with the county on the Lot C development, and are utilizing our increment, if you will, that's being generated from Lot C to help pay debt on the parking structure that's downtown. So that's another one of those regional uses, parking for folks. You, you know, that's just another one of those things. So it's not so much that we have a gap, it's more of, we've identified, here's what would impact our levy, we're looking to try to reduce that, if at all possible.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
One final thought is, I'm sure this council has a lot to discuss and decide before we get back to you, but if alternative solutions were to present itself that would solve your problems, would that be something that the city of La Crosse would be willing to sit down and talk about?
Yes. We're always willing to consider that. I think we've had, just in a little bit of time here in debating some of the room tax issues, we've had some business people that have indicated some interest. The thing is, though, is, without sounding too crass, we need the commitment and the cash on hand in order to, you know, to move forward. We need something beyond, if you will, verbal commitment.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Anybody else? I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and this council will chew on the, I would like as much data as you could send to us.
Okay.
And that would, that would certainly help. More data is better.
We will, I will make sure that our staff can put together a package with the market study, economic impacts, and basically our design and our budget to this point, and send that to you, and then you can distribute that. So appreciate the time this evening.
Okay. And we appreciate you coming out. I know elected officials, what you need is one more meeting in your life.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendations for approval and/or possible action from the following committees, commissions, or boards. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests removal, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the order of business in the non-consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would like to pull from the consent agenda, Plan Commission NN, and place on the non-consent agenda.
Okay. NN will be pulled, and it will become, let's see, we will make that, NN, why don't we make that number 7A?
Is that MM, Mary Mary, or Nancy Nancy?
Nancy Nancy.
NN. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. And so we will put that as 7A. Is there any other items you wish to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Olson, seconded by Alder Stevens, to approve the consent agenda. On favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. Okay, so recapping, we have, we're going to use seven, we're going to go to 7A right now, or go to NN right now, as our first item on the non-consent agenda. So NN, I am the chair of the Plan Commission, so, okay. Denial of a request to amend site plan permit number 18-1016, conditions of approval filed by Terry Wieland, 600 El Houser Road on Alaska, Wisconsin, 54650, for the purpose of changing condition number 26, tied to the construction of a five-unit townhome or rowhouse development at the property located at 2215 to 2217 to 2219, 2221, 2223 Abbey Road, tax parcel Katie.
Thank you. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was a unanimous decision to deny the request made by the applicant. I've been asked to note the reason for the denial. So out of the Plan Commission minutes dated Tuesday, April 23, 2019, I had noted that city staff did not agree with the request to change, and noted that as a site plan permit represents an agreement between the applicant and the city of Onalaska, any change to those conditions of approval must be approved both by the Plan Commission and Common Council. We had also, one of our Plan Commissioners, Paul, had stated that he did not see any basis to approve the applicant's request to amend the site plan permit, stating it sounds like it was agreed to at the time, it was a reasonable point to be in agreement on. At this point in time, I do not see a basis for it. Further, there was discussion noting that if the applicant submitted the elevations, this is in reference to the fill of the land going up to the base of where the first floor is, there is a comment in the letter that had stated that it appears as though this additional strip of brick facade would look like it was floating. So the Plan Commissioner was referring to the elevations that were included in the packet, noting that the fill would be going up to the base of it, so it would not appear as though it was floating. So the comment made is that if the applicant submitted that elevation, showing the fill up to the floor level, that's part of the approved requirements. I think staff is well within their rights to insist that the fill be added up to basically the bottom of the brick. Further, at the very end, Paul has stated, "I'm in full agreement with staff's recommendation on this. I don't think we should be second-guessing staff on something such as this." As a summary of the reasons for why the request was denied by the Plan Commission.
Thanks, Katie.
Does the city administrator have anything to say?
Frog in my throat. I would ask legal counsel in terms of the procedure here for Plan Commission recommendation regarding the conditions, what role the council plays at this moment.
I was looking at the, I was reading the minutes, I apologize.
Yes, just asking for legal counsel's insights regarding the role of the Common Council at this point in time, regarding a decision made by the Planning, by the Plan Commission.
With respect to the site plan, this is with respect to a site plan review, that is in, that sits with...
Would you like me to summarize?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. So to explain the site plan review process, to give you a minute, we have applicants that come forward and propose development to the city. City staff review it, that review is included by our engineering, our fire department, excuse me, inspection department, and the planning department, and we look at the development from all aspects, and we draft conditions of approval. Based on the substantial, if it's a small addition, if they're adding a deck, if it's an accessory structure, versus if it's an entirely new building, you'll see conditions ranging from one page of five or six conditions, to five to six pages of conditions. So this particular development was a larger one. It was a brand-new facility here in the city of Onalaska, a five-row townhome, and as part of this process, city staff, planning in particular, we review architecture. We require that the applicant show all four sides of the building, and then we review that accordingly. So in the Abbey Road area in particular, we have worked with other applicants that had done development on Abbey Road, not far from where this was, and we had also required a strip of brick to face Abbey Road as a feature, so if someone driving by, it enhances the curb appeal. So when I had made that request to the applicant, they had offered to me, which was documented in the notes, to reduce the amount of brick that would be on the new frontage road on the north side, to only go up halfway, and instead wrap that brick around the eastern facade. We weren't asking that the brick go on the backside of it, or the side that would not be viewed by the public. It was just going to be along the two frontage roads area. City staff agreed to that, so we wrote the condition of approval that was proposed to us at that time. So the next step is, after we've addressed all of the conditions of approval, we send this list to the applicant, and we also send a site plan permit approval form. That form states that it's tied to all of those conditions of approval, and if they sign that permit, they are agreeing to adhere to all conditions of approval for this development. They signed the permit application, and from that, we issued the permit, and the project was able to proceed. At this time, the applicant has come forward, requesting to modify that condition, to not put that strip of brick facade facing Abbey Road, and instead go back to the original design of vinyl. So as that agreement is essentially in agreement with the city of Onalaska and the owner of the property, any change to that has to be approved by both the Plan Commission and the Common Council. So the Plan Commission voted to deny this request, so now it has come forward to the Common Council to take final action. Is that a good summary?
Correct. And so, because it's deemed a contractual issue and not a new site plan review, it would be up to the Common Council to make the, to make a decision based upon the recommendation of the Planning, the Planning Commission, if it had been an original site plan review, and if it had been an original site plan review which the applicant was appealing or was unhappy about, that would go to the Board of Zoting Appeals. But because this is an existing site plan, that's, that's what's being requested is, is an accommodation in the site plan, or a variance in the site plan.
Because the site plan has been made part of the conditions, though, that's, I guess, my concern, is that the conditions were approved by the Plan Commission. So this isn't just a site plan review, it's actually a condition amendment they're requesting.
But there are conditions to the site plan, it's the conditions to the site plan review. It ultimately comes down to, or it ultimately comes down to changing the conditions, and so that's something that this council can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So were there any circumstances that changed for the builder after the permit was issued?
The builder is here, Terry Wieland, he The builder is here, Terry Wieland, he could probably better address that question versus myself.
Terry, would you please step up to the podium? Identify yourself for the transcriptionist, please.
Terry Wieland, 600 El Houser Road in Onalaska. I'm the owner and builder of the project. Yes, the condition did change. Upon building, setting the building in the specific area, it made more sense to not have a steep upgrade and fill-in where we're talking about this brick facing. It's just like, you guys don't like 20% grades or whatever, I didn't want a steep runoff from my building just to accommodate filling up there. I wanted to expose more of the basement, and it'll all blend in nice and won't have any steep grade work, and that makes the brick effort, or the brick art, appear like it's going to be out of the ground. That's why I requested the change. I haven't built any building that something hasn't changed during the process of building it, you know, and this was the procedure that I had to go through to get this changed. And for some reason, they want to stick to the, the brick on there, and I've heard comments from the Plan Commissioner, Paul, exactly said if, if the council, or if the committee was for it, it's not really a big deal. It's, you know, it's not going to make or break at the look of the building. It's not that big of an area. It's 36 feet by 4 feet.
Well, Mr. Wieland, why do you think that, why do you think the Planning Commission denied your request?
I have no idea. I was surprised, I haven't...
See, that's, that's, that's what you're asking us to change.
Correct.
So, we have these people making decisions for us, and their recommendation comes to us, now you want us to change that, and I have, I have a difficult time with that, to be honest with you.
There is no ordinance, there is no condition of the subdivision that this brick goes on. It's only an opinion of the Plan Commission, and it was an opinion of myself that I agreed to, but now that the grading has changed, I requested to remove it.
And their response was?
You got the response.
Okay.
United.
Okay. That's all I have to say. Anyone else?
No, I, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we uphold the decision of the Plan Commission and deny the request to amend site plan permit 18-1016 for the purpose of changing condition 26.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Wolf, seconded by Alder K. Smith, to uphold the decision of the Plan Commission. Discussion.
Your Honor, I just want to say, I talked to Terry this morning, and the reason why we did take it off the consent agenda is because Terry felt that he didn't have a real answer why it was no, so that's why I asked Katie to kind of explain the situation, and I, which I think she did, and the documentation, everything to support it. So, that's the reason why we did make that exception, and Terry was going to be here tonight, and wanted to make sure that he did have an answer, that the Planning Commission supported it, and why, and the details of it. So, I just wanted to throw that in as a comment, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Terry.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying, now...
Aye vote, I think.
An aye vote is to sustain...
The denial.
The denial. Okay. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you, Terry.
Item eight, suspension of council rule section 2-23, N.C., according to ordinances. Resolution 26-2019 to dissolve the Onalaska Technology Committee, which I vetoed. We move to, to a vote on whether to sustain the veto or to override. Yes, clerk.
Basically, the resolution will be put back on the table, the council can make a decision of what they would like to do with the resolution. It takes a two-thirds vote of the council to overturn the veto, so however they vote would reflect whether they sustain the veto or they turn on the veto. So, basically, resolution 26-2019 to dissolve the Technology Committee is back on the floor.
And this is just to sustain or...
Just to put it back on the floor for them to take action.
Right, to put it back on the floor. Alder Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, if I heard you correctly, Carrie, so if we wish to make a motion to approve resolution 26-2019, it will be to enact, once again, what we did last month at REorg to dissolve the committee. If we choose to do nothing, the veto will stand, correct? Okay.
And the, and the, then there'll have to be a second, a second piece to that, but it won't happen tonight.
Correct. Okay. And if I may, if I could ask Mayor Chilton and our, and our city administrator for their thoughts on this item, first, the mayor, as your thoughts behind the, behind the veto, and Eric also, as your, how the initial resolution came before us at the REorg.
Okay. Who would...
Oh, you'd probably want a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we should have a motion on the floor.
Before we have any kind of discussion.
Okay. I will move that to, to approve resolution 26-2019.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to approve resolution 26-2019. Motion made by Alder Wolf, seconded by Alder T. Smith. Okay, discussion, and...
You.
You want, you would like me to go first? Okay. The reason I vetoed this is, and I gave it a lot of thought, I'm not so sure that I want to get rid of a Technology Committee, but rather move it to an ad-hoc committee, which would only meet when, when either the city administrator or the council deemed it necessary for them to get additional information on the technology. This was driven out of a situation that happened where the Technology Committee was talking about something, and our technology person was, said, "Well, how do you do that?" And somebody on the Technology Committee said, "Well, at the place I work, this is how we do that." And the, and our technology person said, "I wouldn't, I didn't even know that was possible to do it that way." So, I, I guess, in hearing that, I would like to keep as much expertise in this area, at least an arm's length away. I mean, they don't have to meet every month, but on times when, when we need some, a little extra support, or a little extra effort, we can call on that, that committee. So, that, that was my reason for vetoing it.
Resolution 26-2019 came to fruition from conversations that go back over a year. The difficulty having the committee meets, getting a quorum is often a challenge, of course, as we discussed that. However, the, the real point is, the, as an advisory committee, two words there, one, it's advisory, it's the only committee that we have in the structure that any action it takes goes to another committee, it doesn't go to the council for decision. Any capital improvements expenses go to the capital, to Board of Public Works for capital, any policies go to A&amp;J, and so on. So, in the desire to be more efficient with our committee, our committee structure, that was one issue there that I had as advisory, but also as a committee. The people that serve on the committee are indeed knowledgeable, and fully intend to be able to access them as individual resources, much as we would any purchase or any new program or policy in the organization itself. If there's new ways of doing business in police or fire, my expectation is that the chiefs would go, you know, discuss with people what are the new ways of doing things. Same thing with, you know, clerk, if there's new technologies or new systems, we do that. There are no committees, though, that they would necessarily go to for that purpose. And to some degree, it also hamstrings my ability to gain that knowledge in that particular area, because now, instead of reaching on the phone and just getting information, setting agenda, getting a quorum to meet, not having a walking quorum of members to be able to discuss, whereas, without having the committee, all the information can be gained on a, a more frequent basis, in a way that respects, I think, the role of the administrator and the department heads to go get that information as needed. Finally, if there's a concern about the knowledge or the experience of the individual employee, that's best done through coaching or done through performance improvement plan, not by having a committee to overview that particular employee, in my opinion.
Okay. So, anybody have a question? Yes.
I, I think I just have some comments. When the, when we voted to dissolve the committee, I've done a little research since, and I've, I've erroneously assumed that it was similar to the Great River Landing Committee, which had not met over the previous year. Looking back through the minutes, I see that the IT Committee met five times last year, and two times so far here in 2019. And as such, in this year, there are several items that were kind of left on the table that were supposed to be addressed in an April meeting, which didn't happen because it was resolved. Those issues were deciding about the expansion of the police and camera system, Wi-Fi at Great River Landing, and there's an upcoming phone upgrade, which I believe there was quoted about 175,000, and I'm not sure where that was left. I understand that they also look at city mobile phone policy, electronic communication policy, the email system policy, and they just instituted the FMX ticketing system. So, I, I think the mayor brings up a, a very good point, and my concern is, is that if we are to dissolve this committee, I, I think that we're leaving some work on the table that if, if we are to close it, it should be a, a planned transition. Additionally, if we, it may be appropriate to go to the ad-hoc system, and if it turns out that the committee does not have a use in, in the ad-hoc status, and does not meet for an extended period of time, it would be entirely appropriate to dissolve the committee. But I don't know that we're there yet, and I think that we can plan this transition a little bit better. So, I, I think I'm inclined to sustain the veto.
Anybody else? Okay, let's, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure if anyone else, oh, thank you. I know older person, Tom Smith, has served in the past on Technology Advisory Committee, and, and I've been a committee member for 15 years, either as a council member or as a community member, so I think I can speak to this. Over the years, there has been some confusion at times as to what items should come before the Technology Committee. At times, items have been purchased that never appeared before technology for advice or input, and a lot of items have also come before tech, have come before technology since its inception in 2002. I think if our administration, city administrator's vision is to streamline the committee process a bit more, I'm all for that. It's one less agenda to prepare, one less to post, one less meeting to make quorum, fewer minutes, less costs in, less, less cost in the long run. My, my one concern, I do think ad-hoc committees can, can work, my only concern is that with ad-hoc committees, I find that possibly committee members don't have as much of a buy-in, so they just meet very sporadically, so attendance can tend to be even less than a, a committee that meets on a regular basis, because everyone knows they need to come the fourth Thursday of every month at 6:30 PM, and they show up, and they have that buy-in. So, I feel very comfortable speaking on behalf of the current Technology Committee members when I say that if staff has needs in the future, either research needs, specific questions, whatever may arise, I know they will all welcome a phone call from, or, or an email from staff. They will make themselves available. They have said that a number of times. We have one guy in particular who, he's kind of the phone king, so, and he's very proud of that, so he's the phone geek in our group. I think if we vote tonight to dissolve the committee, and for some reason, in the future staff or administration feels there, there's a need to reappoint, we can certainly do that at that time. But I think dissolving the committee will give our staff more flexibility, and be more able to be efficient going forward. And so, while I certainly respect Mayor Chilton's point of view on this matter, I will ask my fellow alderpersons to vote yes and pass resolution 26-2019 to dissolve the Technology Committee. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like, I'd like to just concur with, with Diane. Having been on the Technology Committee, been a while, spent a number of years, but also being an IT folk, I think with having a city administrator today, and a lot of the resources that are available today here, then they weren't when I was way back in 2002 and 2005, it was a little bit different. So, I think we have come a long way, and I think, you know, it gives us, the administrator and his staff, the ability to, to make those decisions, but like Diane says, there's a lot of the knowledge in this area, and feel free, we could always still pull them in as, as needed in advisory. So, I support, support that, too.
Okay, let's, anybody else? All in favor of...
I'll ask for a roll call, just to make it easier, so you don't have to do it twice, probably.
Okay. So, this, so a yes vote is to, is to override? A yes vote will override?
Dissolve the committee. Yes. Kim Smith?
Aye.
Diane Wolf?
Aye.
Tom Smith?
Aye.
Dan Stevens?
Nay.
Undy Ayer?
Aye.
Jim Olson?
Aye.
Veto is overridden. The Technology Committee is history. Finance Committee, Alder K. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. The following is a list of monies expended since the last Common Council meeting dated April 9 of 2019. The total is $9,195,483.69. I move to approve these vouchers.
Second. Motion made by, by Alder K. Smith, seconded by...
Mr. Stevens.
Okay. Okay. Alder Stephens. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item B is approval of the agreement with the General Engineering Company, GEC, for the provisions of inspection services. It was the recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve this agreement pending attorney review, and I'll make a motion to approve that agreement at this time.
Motion made by Alder Smith, or Alder K. Smith, to approve the agreement with GEC.
City Administrator needs a second.
I'm not seconding it.
No, we need a second first before we can...
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Alder Wolfson. Now, Mr. City Administrator.
I ask with the motion and the second to include language that that motion will be subject to the approval, the final approval of the agreement, as approved, by the city attorney. We don't have that final agreement yet, but it's...
Okay, that was going to be my first comment. Also, is, do we have that information? Okay. I'll amend my motion that the approval will be, will only be valid after incorporating any changes or approval of the city attorney. That's an amendment.
I amend my second.
Okay. Hearing none.
Is it appropriate to see what the changes are first, before we vote on them? Is it appropriate to see what the changes are first before we vote on them?
Do you want me to?
Please do. Yes.
We sent a number of changes to the, to GEC. They accepted the majority of them, and we were down to one section, and they were sending, and we seem to have come to agreement on that, and they're sending it to their attorney. So, it's, so the city administrator and GEC have been, have been talking about the changes, and now it's being sent to GEC's attorney to make sure that they can accept the changes we made. So, and the last change has to do with, we won't agree to indemnify them for their negligence. So, and they, we've, that's the last issue.
Yes, everybody's looking at me, so.
No, no, no.
It was just a, I thought it was a valid question, so.
Yeah, it is.
We can either vote on it now, or we can refer it to later, and it sounds like that everything on the city's part is settled, so it sounds as if it would be appropriate to approve it.
My request is not to defer it, to continue to await the final version by the city attorney. Timing is a bit of the essence here, because the position was they're contracted out to help backfill some of the inspections as we're entering our busy construction season.
Yep.
I don't think it can wait until June.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. Item C, Kim?
I think that was the vote on the amendment. Carrie, could you correct me?
That was.
Right.
That was unamended. Okay. Now, to approve the agreement as amended, that GEC for the provision of inspection services with, with Legals adjustments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. Now, we go to C.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item C is approval of the Community Development Investment Grant Agreement between the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, WEDC, and the City of Onalaska for the Great River Residences Project in the amount of $250,000. It was a recommendation of the committee to approve this agreement, and I move that we approve it today.
Second.
Motion made.
Mr. Stevens.
Motion made by Alder K. Smith, seconded by Alder Stevens, to approve WD, the agreement between WEDC and the City of Onalaska for the Great River Residences Project in the amount of $250,000. Yes?
Your Honor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the motion from FNP that came out of that was contingent upon the approval of the development agreement also.
You are correct. So, I'll amend my motion once again, that this agreement is contingent upon the development agreement between the City of Onalaska and the Development Group.
Okay.
I don't like that motion.
There's an amendment that, that it is relative, it is, go ahead. Yes?
My understanding is that the, is that the issue was that the developer needed to have signed, delivered the signed agreement, which has occurred. Right?
That is correct. I'm guessing, and I guess I would speak to the members of the committee, was the intent that the agreement was signed, or was the intent agreement was to be approved by the council as well? I can't speak to that.
If, if that's the case, then, if that's the case, then rather than have, entertain these motions, I would suggest moving this item after closed session, then, since the, since that's a topic at closed session, rather than vote in this conditional manner.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
My suggestion would be to withdraw the motion and then move this matter until after closed session.
Withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion and request that this matter be moved in the agenda to following closed session, and I apologize.
It is moved. Till after closed session. Okay, Judiciary Committee.
Your Honor, we, I recommend that we suspend the rules for the next two ordinances, Ordinance 1643-219, to amend Chapter 3 of Title IX, Section 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Onalaska relating to the North Abbey Road Zone charges, first and second reading.
First, we have to have a motion to suspend. So, the motion is to suspend the rules.
Second, second.
Motion by?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alder T. Smith, seconded by Alder Olson, to suspend the rules.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I just wanted to confirm, the intent is to give it its first, second, third, and final reading this evening. I think I might have heard first and second, unless I heard wrong.
Right, but we're just suspending the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Okay. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? The rules are suspended now.
Now, okay, Ordinance 1643-219, to amend Chapter 3 of Title IX, Section 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Onalaska relating to North Abbey Road Zone charges, first, second, and third reading. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Alder T. Smith, seconded by Alder Olson, to give Ordinance 1643-2019 its first, second, and final reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Okay, Your Honor, same thing here, we'd like to suspend the rules for Ordinance 1644-2019 for, for the first, second, and reading.
Yep. Alder, motion to suspend the rules by Alder T. Smith?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Wolf, to suspend the rules. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. The rules are suspended.
Okay, Ordinance 1644-2019, to amend Chapter 3 of Title IX, Section 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Onalaska, related to Crestwood Lane Zone charges for the first, second, and third, and final reading.
Okay, motion to approve, Ordinance 1644-2019, to approve, to approve Ordinance 1644-2019 and give it its first, second, and final reading. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Administrative Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, approval of special events permit for downtown sound by the Onalaska Hilltopper Rotary on Tuesday evening, starting June 4th, 2019, through August 27th, 2019, from approximately 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It was a recommendation of the administrative committee to approve this agenda item, and I will make a motion to approve this evening.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Wolf, seconded by Alder K. Smith, to approve, oh.
For discussion, Your Honor, I asked Alder Wolf to pull this off the agenda. The purpose for that was just merely transparency. I am a co-chair, along with Brad Johnson, and with the assistance of Maggie Rochell for the downtown sound event. I thought it more appropriate to not include it in the non-consent agenda, and then I was voting on it, despite the fact that there will be no material gain by myself. We will be featuring a band each week for three months at, at Dash Park. We will also be collecting for charitable purposes, money for the Great River Sculpture, and also food donations for the Onalaska Food Pantry. So, the only reason I asked to pull that off was just so I could abstain from this vote.
Okay, so we have a, who made the motion, again?
Diane.
Okay, motion by Alder Wolf, seconded by?
Second.
It was me.
It was. Undi seconded.
I think it was.
It was Kim, yeah.
Alder Kim.
By Alder K. Smith, to approve the special events permit for downtown sound at Onalaska Rotary on Tuesday evenings, from the 4th of June through the 27th of August, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, Board of Public Works.
Thank you. Item A is Resolution 29-2019. It's a resolution regarding the assessments for alley paving between Second Avenue North and Third Avenue North from Main Street to King Street. It was a recommendation of the committee, and I move that we approve Resolution 29-2019.
Second.
Motion made by Alder K. Smith, seconded by Alder T. Smith, to approve Resolution Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you. Item B was reviewing consideration of a contract extension for the 2014-2020 refuse and recycling collection contract with Harder's Quick Cleanup. It was a recommendation of the committee to move forward with extending the contract from 2021 to 2018, or, excuse me, 2028, time flies, and the extension, with this extension to include negotiation for what yard waste receptacle, receptacles added as an option. I move, I move that we continue to move forward with the contract extension.
Motion made by Alder K. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Wolf, for reviewing consideration of the contract extension, 2014 to 2020 refuse and recycling collection contract with the addition of yard waste container. Discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Under discussion, I just want to say that the, the time of this is important, because this is like a crossroads, where we would have to decide if, if we were, if we wanted to go out to bid on the, on the refuse and recycling collection, now would be the time that we would have to start preparing for that and going, preparing the documents. But we do have a contingency for contract extension in our current agreement that we have with them. We've been happy with their service and have just identified a few areas that staff will be focusing on and bringing forward as the contract negotiations begin. Thank you.
Okay. Jared?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as Alder Person Smith pointed out, there was a long discussion at the Board of Public Works meeting on various topics in relation to the solid waste contract with Harder's Quick Cleanup. They are requesting a seven-year extension to the current contract that runs out at the end of 2020. The current contract does include an option for an extension in that contract. It would extend at the current pricing, where it's a yearly CPI, as in the current contract. They would be using the existing automated carts for another seven-year term, so those carts that you see in our community today would be used for another seven-year term. As was pointed out, Harder's is proposing an addition of a 95-gallon cart for yard waste, so staff is just looking for a recommendation to move forward with this. We'll have the city attorney work with us to draft an extension of the agreement to bring back forward.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved.
Thank you. Item C is reviewing consideration of proposals received for the Fire Department kitchen remodel. It was the recommendation of the committee to move forward with awarding this to Borton Construction for a total of $67,204, and I move that we approve that at this time.
Second.
Motion made by Alder K. Smith, seconded by Alder Wolf, for consideration of proposal received for the Fire Department kitchen remodel by Borton Construction in the amount of $67,204. Discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under, for the record, under discussion, I'd like to add that the Fire Department did budget $60,000 for this item, and so it has, it has come in over the budgeted amount. The Fire Department does have a balance of $2,970 from the purchase of their rapid deploy craft, and it's our expectation that they will use that money to help offset the difference. But as we move forward through this construction season and our capital improvement projects, we will need to be looking for some places where we can make up the difference that we're still lacking on this item. Thank you.
Mr. City Administrator.
The, in discussion with the department over the last several days, we were able to identify both in the capital projects and in Fund 207, funding sources for that. Generally, at this point in time, we would indicate those sources when something is over budget. Fred, do you have those?
Yes, it's important that the, that the funds be noted as to where they were going to come from, so that, so we can move forward with this project. The $4,234 needed will be coming out of the Equipment Replacement Fund 207 within the Fire Department.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'm just wondering, it seems like it's a very small amount of money that we're talking about for the difference between what was budgeted and what's needed. Might we have any opportunity to look for some fundraising through the community, maybe through OEF, or something that we could work with local organizations in the community with the Fire Department? I mean, it's, am I understanding that correctly? It's not a lot of money, and if we can do something right for the firefighting, for firefighters, that's, I think, an avenue that we should explore.
I certainly will, will. Is it okay if I say something first?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I will certainly take it to the OEF. Now, Mr. City Administrator.
I guess to answer the question, there's always the opportunity to, for fundraising for the departments within the city. And in fact, one possible source was some funds received there as well, but we think we were able to avoid those donations at this point in time. But there's always that opportunity. We welcome that. The more the community participates and assists our departments, all of our departments, I think it's greatly appreciated.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. Mr. City Administrator.
Would you like me to read it in for the record?
Yes.
Resolution 30-2019, preliminary resolution to vacate and discontinue a portion of Crestwood Lane, City of Onalaska, La Crosse County, Wisconsin. I can't make a motion.
We need a motion.
I move we approve Resolution 30-2019.
Second.
Motion by Alder K. Smith, seconded by Alder Olson, to approve Resolution 30-2019, preliminary resolution to vacate and discontinue a portion of Crestwood Lane, City of Onalaska, La Crosse County, Wisconsin. Mr. City Administrator.
This vacation is a very small portion of Crestwood Lane, and because it's all on one side of the center line, it would all go to the property owner, which ultimately is Onalaska, ourselves, which is the spots where we'll be doing the water station for the water and the Crestwood Lane project.
Thank you.
It is unused and unnecessary right away.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Abstentions? So moved. Closed session, to consider a motion to convene. Closed session to consider a motion to convene in closed session under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In this case, discussion and consideration of a development agreement with Marvin Wanderers of Great River Residences Onalaska LLC, PO Box 609, La Crosse, Wisconsin, 54602, as associated with the Tax Increment District, TID Number 5. And under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren F, of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specified persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where par, subparen B, applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. In this case, a discussion of extension of unpaid leave per 7.01 Leave of Absence Policy. Motion to go into closed. Oh, hold it, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
Trying to move you along.
Thank you.
Some water.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren G, of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely.